So, just in case if anyone would like to speak under citizen statements and petitions, please make sure that you're signed up on our sheet with our council clerk and you will have three minutes at that time to speak. If you're not on the list and you would like to speak, please sign up now. At this time, we're going to have a proclamation about Energy Efficiency Day 2019. So, but before I do the proclamation, I'd like Ms. Brenda Watson just to talk about the event for a minute to give us all some background before I provide this proclamation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Brenda Watson, 13 Waller Circle. I want to thank the town council for making the quick decision to honor Energy Efficiency Day, which takes place October 2nd. It's a national movement that's growing across the country. Connecticut has not really engaged in this event. It's the fourth year and what we aim to do is bring more attention to how energy efficiency can not only save you money and energy costs, but in a lot of ways it also saves lives. Without energy, people struggle or sometimes engage in behaviors that are very dangerous, such as using stoves to heat their homes, misuse of generators, etc. So, there are a number of ways on which you can actively engage in your own way in Energy Efficiency Day. You can maybe dedicate half of your day to not using any electricity and testing yourself as to how you can save more money by unplugging things that are not in use, unplugging that toaster or chargers in your home, or turning off light switches that are connected to your wall outlets. There, again, there are a number of ways on which you can actively engage. If you go, if you Google search Energy Efficiency Day, you'll find a number of toolkits as well as tips as to how you can save money on energy. So, again, I want to thank the town for not only setting the stage for the entire state and representing Energy Efficiency Day, but in a number of ways, the CEEC has really made some gains with energy efficiency and weatherization throughout town and focusing a lot of the energy on the low and moderate income side of town. So, again, I want to thank the town council and applaud the town of Bloomfield for setting the stage for the entire state.
So, this proclamation is a little bit early, but I'm hoping that we'll remember that the 2nd of October, we're going to make a bigger concerted effort. Whereas, energy efficiency is the cheapest, quickest, and cleanest way to meet our energy needs and reduce utility bills for residents, businesses, and industrial customers. And whereas, smart energy use reduces the amount of electricity we need to power our lives, which helps avoid power plant emissions that can harm our health, pollute our air, and warm our climate. And whereas, cutting energy waste saves U.S. consumers billions of dollars in their utility bills annually, up to $500 per household from appliance efficiency standards alone. And whereas, implementing energy efficiency and other clean energy policies and programs helps boost economic opportunities and job creation while continuing to move toward a sustainable future. And whereas, more than 2.3 million Americans work in the energy efficiency sector in local, good-paying, clean energy jobs that can't be outsourced, and increasing efficiency will create more of them. And whereas, for the cities and states tackling harmful pollution, energy efficiency can get them about halfway toward their climate goals. And whereas, the residents of Bloomfield can continue to contribute to our energy efficiency efforts by learning about and participating in our Energy Efficiency Day. And whereas, a nationwide network of energy efficiency groups and partners has designated the first Wednesday in October as the National Annual Energy Efficiency Day. And whereas, together, the residents of Bloomfield can continue to contribute to our sustainability efforts by learning more about energy efficiency and practicing smarter energy use in their daily lives. And now therefore I, Suzette DeBeetham Brown, Mayor of the town of Bloomfield, on behalf of the Bloomfield Town Council, do hereby proclaim October 2nd as Energy Efficiency Day in Bloomfield and urges citizens to join us in supporting our clean energy goals and moving towards a more energy efficiency now and in the future. This will be dated on the 2nd of October 2019. Suzette DeBeetham Brown, Mayor, and the entire Bloomfield Town Council.
If I may, I just wanted to note that Connecticut is the first, the last time I checked, Connecticut is the first town municipality in the state to have this proclamation and engage in Energy Efficiency Day. So, thank you very much.
However, please note that all councilors are here except Counselor McCleary, Counselor Marshall Neely, and Counselor Waterhouse. At this time, we'll have presentation of awards by the Bloomfield Beautification Committee.
Good evening. This is the first day of autumn. Eighty-eight degrees outside, but it's the first day of autumn. And I want to welcome everyone here to the town council, our new town manager, and to our audience and people watching on BATV. My name is Sharon Mann, Chair of the Bloomfield Beautification Committee, which I will call BBC after this, so it's easier. And I reside at One Adams Road. The BBC received many nominations this year and since, excuse me, hold on one second. Just got to get this going here. So, there we go. Okay. Since 1989, the BBC has recognized residential, commercial, and industrial property owners within our town who make a positive contribution to Bloomfield's appearance through landscaping and maintenance of their property. How do we judge the properties? The properties are judged based on neatness, creativity, color harmony, plant health, plant selections, and overall curbside appeal. There were 20 winners this year. Okay, we have to get this going. Hold on. There's always mechanics that happen in this, right? No matter how you do this. Okay. Every garden has a story, right? So, this year, the BBC received many nominations from the community and from my committee. And two of my committee are here today, Glenn Finley and Henriette Hertzfeld. And I couldn't do it without them. They're wonderful and they will be guiding you tonight as you receive your awards. You're going to come up here when I announce your names and you will be able to shake the hands of every one of your councilmen people. And then you will come over here and you will be given your certificate and your lawn sign and the rest of the directions will be given to you. And I ask that everyone please hold your clapping till the end because there's a lot to go through. Okay. So, yes. Oh, okay. I don't know why it's doing this. Okay, hold on. Okay. Probably because we had it on so long. Okay. I don't know why this is. Okay. So, let's try this again. This is the mechanics of doing something on a computer. So, no two gardens are alike that we looked at. They all had stories and I'd like to share a few with you. These folks who won these awards are your neighbors, they're your friends, they're our residents. And I was so inspired by all their stories. I made an effort to go to every house that won and present them their envelope of their recognition that they had won. Not everybody was home, but many of the people were, and these are some of their stories. So, Kobe lives in his grandmother's house. Thelma Johnson died in March, but they carry on her love for gardening. They were so excited when they heard they won because they knew that Thelma was looking down smiling. All the years she had gardened were now being carried on by Kobe and his fiancee, Brittany. And it was really wonderful to walk with them in their garden and see what they were doing. And they just were so excited that they just knew Thelma was there smiling on them. Okay. Horace has COPD. It's a lung disease and heart issues. He's in his 80s. He's been married 62 years and he loves to garden. He is thrilled that his grandson, Zaquan, helps him because he loves to grow exotic tropicals. And every year, he has elephant years that grow up to the top of his roof. And he had a row of beautiful red hibiscus all the way down his driveway and blooming. And he plants those every year. And so, it's a partnership between young and old. And I delivered to Diana her winning envelope as she was going off to celebrate her 80th birthday. Needless to say, she was thrilled. Diana had been living in New York City, but had come back to Bloomfield to live. Diana actually had a street named after her in town called Diana Drive. Have you ever seen that street? That was named after her. Her father was a builder at one time in Bloomfield and he built many of the houses in that area. She shared with me that what has kept her gardens looking so beautiful is her friendship with her neighbor, Joseph, who has tended her garden with her for many, many years. It turns out that her sister was Millie Zito, who was a longtime member of the BBC before she died. Her grandsons maintain the Millie Zito garden in the middle of town in her memory. And the BBC also discovered that another winner this year, Peter, who has a rather funky, creative garden at his business place, is also related to Millie. It really, truly takes a village. And I end my conversation with Danielle, who came to live in Bloomfield in 2003. She and her husband, Derek, bought their house on Gab Road with the idea when they had kids, they would be able to walk through, be able to walk out their front door, wander down paths flanked by flowers and vegetables, and they could pick food for dinner. And it would be like walking in a fairy garden. And so, that's what happened. And 16 years later, their front yard is what they envisioned. My other daughter loves picking peaches because they planted peach trees. They imagined fruit trees with fruit on them. They have chickens. And they're eating the food that they've grown in their garden. Their children have learned about sustainability and honoring the earth. Ethan is a volunteer for Friends of Philly Park and is a sophomore in the Voag Department at the high school. There are just so many wonderful stories, but enough for now. Let's get on with announcing the winners. Now, we're going to try this and I'm not sure why it's not working. So, if you'll excuse me for one minute. I just got to... Okay. The first house that won was 102 Doncaster Road, Helen and George Bragdon. Is George here? So, if they're not here, I'll just continue. He may not have been able to make it. The next house is 477 Simsberry Road, John and Martha Clark. Unfortunately, Martha died last year, but John continues the garden and it's beautiful both in the front and the back. And as you see, every house is different and they're on all parts of town. This is 1 Pent Road. Oh, are you John? Oh, okay.
Ron.
Oh, you're Ron instead of John. Okay. Okay. Well, this is Ron Clark. And we'll get that, we'll give you a new certificate. Okay. Thank you, Ron. Sorry for that error. That's reverse White Pages for you. Okay. 1 Pent Road, Tria Goodman Case could not be here tonight. 6 Andrea Lane, Angeline Crowsdale. Angeline loves tropicals. And she's very excited to be here in this different environment. 74 Ledgerd Avenue is Diana Darlin. And is she here? Is Diana here? All right. So, Diana and her neighbors down the street are Joseph and Lassini or Moses. Are they here too? Yes, please come up too because we have a certificate for you because Diana said she couldn't have had her gardens all these years if Joseph wasn't there helping her. And as you see in the pictures, Diana's garden is a lot of conifers, all beautiful varieties. And I encourage you, if you get a chance to go by and see some of these gardens, we moved up our nominations and our winners to September because when we give out these awards in October, the frost come and you can't really see anybody's garden. And Diana is a relative, Millie Zito was her sister, right? 34 Philly Street, and I hope I got this right because I went back and forth. I think it's Edna Dimmery and Robert Pratt, but it's Edna Pratt and Robert Pratt. And are they here? Yes. So, I have an extra certificate in case I had the name wrong.
No, no, it's Edna Pratt, Dimmer, and Robert Dimmer.
Okay. All right. So, you just need to start over there. Okay. So, I'll put the Dimmery in. I've got another of those thing at home. So, an interesting fact about Edna's house that if you see in front, she has a tree that died and she really didn't want to get rid of the tree. So, she put all kinds of plants on it and vines growing up and it seems to work. I'll get you a new certificate. I wrote it wrong. Okay. All right. No, no, I'll get you a new one. You can come through here. Congratulations. They have an interesting garden too because it doesn't, it's the front of the house, but it doesn't face the street. It faces the side, but that's the way it was built. 17 Cresview Drive is Tanisha Dudley Gardner. Perfect name. Is Tanisha here? Okay, Tanisha isn't here. Okay. Oliver Way is Sherry Ellis. A beautiful little garden nestled next to her house. Do you recognize it?
It's an angle that I, yeah.
4 Breezy No, Margaret Honan, but she couldn't be here tonight. But in addition to the front of her yard, she had this nice little area to the right where she had two Adirondack chairs and the sedums, which made a nice sitting place to see her gardens. 10 Julie Lane. This is the home of Thelma Johnson. This certificate is in her honor from her grandson, Kobe Norden, and Brittany Walpert. I'm trying to recruit these people to the Beautification Committee. Congratulations, Brittany. Good work. I want to know, did you paint your house a different color?
No, it's all red.
It's the one next to it. Oh, that's funny. I kept looking at it saying, "Well, don't tell anybody now."
Yeah, it's not bad. These two are, but my house is over here.
Got it. So, here's an interesting photograph. I kept looking at his house and in one picture I had, it was yellowish-white. And then in these other pictures with the mailbox, it was red. And I thought he painted his house, but it turns out I was photographing the wrong house. So, you had two winners on the street. Okay. 34 Gab Road is Danielle and Derek Marander. Did I skip one? So, the first one is CJ Otardo Inc. Tools Steel on 29 Peters Road. Peter Otardo, he is also a relative of Millie Zito. So, it's, she had a good lineage. I mean, all these gardeners have really stayed involved. And he did a mural. You can come up. You can go and shake hands. Okay. So, this is Peter. And what I found interesting, this is a fun garden. It's not your typical garden, but he used items and recycled the truck. And he painted a mural, had a mural painted on the side of the building. And these are things that make our town stand out and are special. And he has these two wonderful dogs. One of them you can see at the bottom of the pictures. If you take the time and care about what your front of your establishment looks like. Lots of wonderful planters and colorful conifers. And Dr. Andrea Dennis is here to accept. If you need a good vet, she's a good vet. A little plug, only because I've known her for like a long time. You're welcome. Oh, sure, sure. This is Horace, right? Oh, so Horace is going to shake hands with all of you. He'd like to shake hands. Would you like them to come to you, Horace? He can do it. He's going to come over. So, you always save some of the best for last. And this is Contour's Hair and Spa, a two-bester lane. The owner, Peter Marandino, this year planted abundance of impatience on all sides of his building. Very colorful. He had to water every day, but he was out there watering. You can tell Horace is a good gardener. When I was there, it was raining, but neither one of us got out of the rain. We just kept talking to each other about gardens. Oh, Horace, can you get through here? Congratulations. Oh, and if you need a good haircut, this is... And the last one is Darren Jurnay. Do you know how long they've been here in our town? They're a business, they're one of the first industries in our community. And they just recently built a new building. And accepting for them is Mark Elliott. I called you the grounds manager. I thought you would like that title. And we're always very appreciative when our business take the time to make their places look good. Well, there is. That's just the front. Thank you, Mark. So, BBC would also like to thank Kevin Wilcox, our judge this year, who's responsible for the plantings at Doncaster in Bloomfield. And you know, you don't have to go to New York or Boston to see a botanical garden. If you want to see interesting tropical plants, go take a ride through Doncaster and see what Kevin has done to the grounds. He starts these plants every year and he's tried to make it interesting and different. And it's worth riding through Doncaster to see them. So, I'd like to leave you with the thought that all gardeners live in beautiful places because they make them so. And Bloomfield, thanks each and every one of you for doing that. Thank you.
What a wonderful presentation by our Bloomfield Beautification Committee. So, I'd like to just say thank you to our chair and to her committee who obviously went around and took pictures of all these homes and made such a wonderful presentation. Our tagline is "Come Bloom With Us." And they have definitely done so. I'm not sure about anybody else, but I do have floral envy. So, I might need to come and take a class or just have somebody come plant at my house. But thank you all so very, very much. We totally appreciate it. And thank you for making At this time, do we have any citizen statements or petitions? All right. We're going to have a report from subcommittees. Commit, oh, I'm sorry. What happened? Oh, yes, sir. You didn't sign in. So, do me a favor. Can you please sign in and then you can come up and Really Lord Jesus. And please be mindful. Please be mindful. You only have three minutes on the clock. Can you please provide us with your name?
Earl Miles. 531 Park Avenue, Bloomfield. What I would like to talk about is that we are going to thank Bloomfield for this plant, this energy plant. But you know, we can't just do it alone. We need to call upon the government, the federal government. Today, the president was out there making up noise that the United States, which is a fact, is the greatest energy-producing country in the world. That's a fact. But are we getting the benefit? No, we're not. When Obama won the first election, his first year, the companies called upon him to give them grants for research. He did. He said, "You have contracts out there. You have not been doing it." They said, "We want it." He said, "Take..." out there. You have not been doing it." They said, "We want it." He said, "Take everything, all the lands." So there's not a square foot of land that government own in this country anymore. That can be least of grant for exploration. All of it is handed out. I remember the five largest oil companies in the United States. The president came to the conference and they were asked by a reporter, "What you going to do with this oil when you?" They said, "We are not going to sell it locally. We're going to sell it, export it, because we will not sign any contract that is going to hold a company when we can make twice the amount of money that we can make selling it abroad." And it's a disgrace that this bogus thing about Saudi Arabia bombing. Yes, I say it's a bogus. It's a lie. It's a racket. It's a disgrace. Nothing happened. Nothing. Come on. And immediately, the oil was here. No one knew. They didn't import anything. And immediately, the price of oil went up. And the president is, oh dear, invited. The president of India is in Texas. And they boasting that they're going to sign an oil contract, energy thing with him, through because already India and China is getting the oil that we, the taxpayers of this country, supposed to get the benefit of. They are getting it. So it's, you know, it's a lie. They didn't bomb up anything. Saudi Arabia said, "Listen, it won't hurt you, man." Saudi Arabia released from his reserve. There was no shortage. Yet the rocket is there. We have to pay more for it because, and so we need to start from the bottom, not from the top. We have to use that there. When you say the second.
Suzanne.
Yes, we have to call or representative, invite them, and let them know that this thing must stop. We have to put an end to it. It's a racket. We hope. I mean, come on. Good God. Got to do something. Got to do something about it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. At this time, we're going to have reports from subcommittees, community services, and admin and education. Deputy Mayor Curtin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have nothing to report tonight. The next meeting for committee, Community Service Committee is in December. We meet on a quarterly basis, and that's the fourth quarter. In regards to admin education, we canceled the meeting in September, so I have nothing to report tonight. Our next meeting is October 7th at 6:30 in Conference Room 5 on the second floor. Thank you.
Finance Councilor Goff?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The finance subcommittee met on Monday, September 16th. At that time, the subcommittee basically did two actions. We reviewed a memo from our finance director, Carrie Rowley, explaining movements of the credited source of funding for various capital projects. Basically, the state has tightened its guidelines for compliance with one of the town's grants, the town's municipal capital grant. And they're being more stringent on the types of projects that grant will fund. So we were, the town was fortunate, because we certainly had enough projects to fund under that grant, but some of them were being funded with the general fund. So I applaud our finance director for recognizing that. And all she did was move the funding sources on an accounting basis from the general fund to the grant, so that all of the things that were being funded from the grant would be eligible under the state. So that was, that was a good move. It does not, you know, this is mainly a bookkeeping exercise. We also received an update on assignment of the final fiscal year 2019 surplus. And we had approximately 1.9 million of surplus. And we are looking at putting that away to fund various capital projects for next year and to fund, to pre-fund some of the OPEB, the retiree health liabilities. I also want to mention that I came to the town's tax sale last Thursday. That was a very interesting event. And we did very well. This is the sale of properties that have enough delinquent taxes that we, we are at the point where we will sell them to a bidder. The person who was the owner still has some time to redeem them. But we basically have 14 properties up for sale. And of those, five of them were sold at above the reserve value, meaning that they came, they went at a premium. The town does not get that. But they went at a premium, and we got all the taxes back. And five others were sold less than the reserve amount. So the town would have, the town will lose some money on back taxes, but we will collect some, and we will put those properties back on the tax roll, which is a very good thing. Only four properties did not sell. So I didn't do the precise calculations, but the town is probably going to get over $300,000 in back taxes from this. And I also want to point out that the property that went for the most was the property at 95 Granby Street. And that showed there was some real interest, I think, on buying properties out in that area, which is one of the areas that this council has looked at, trying to get some redevelopment and forming a knowledge corridor with the University of Hartford. So that was a very encouraging sign to me. Finally, I'd just like to mention that the next regularly scheduled meeting of the finance subcommittee will be the October meeting, and that will be October 21st at 6:30 PM in Conference Room 5. Thank you.
Committee on Committees and Land Use and Economic Development, Councilor Mann?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The Committee on Committees did not meet since our last council meeting, so there was nothing to report. However, the Land Use and Economic Development Committee did. We discussed three issues, which are still under discussion and will come before this council later date. One is the renewal of the Reservoir 2 lease. This is a 50-year-old lease for the land just north of Seabury Community. And the town's Leisure Services and Recreation Department has been negotiating with the Department of Environmental Energy and Environmental Protection of the state in order to try and renew this lease. There's a lot of little details that have been worked out before we can move forward. In the meantime, the existing lease is still in effect. And our major concern is to make sure that public access to these lands is maintained. The second issue is an easement that was requested across La Salleette Park property in order to unite two parts of a residential subdivision on Ryfield Hollow Drive. There were 54 acres of land, of which 23 acres would be set aside for open space. And there would be some 51 units built on this piece of property. The layout that was discussed caused the fire marshal some concern. He felt that the main road was too long, too circular, to provide proper access in time of emergency. So there was a need in his part to create an alternative emergency vehicle access. And that's hence the request for the town to provide an easement over a piece of land that we own. So there are a lot of issues involved in that. And we are in the process of researching, the staff is in the process of researching that, so that at the next month's meeting, we hope they'll provide a recommendation. The final item is a complete streets plan or policy. As many of you may know, the town has been engaged in this process for at least six months, working with citizens and charrettes around town to talk about how we can improve our street systems, our sidewalks, our connectivity in a package that provides a series of policy directions, so that whether we're here or somebody else is here, everybody knows what we're really looking for. The connectedness, bike lanes, sidewalks that actually exist and are maintained and are in the right place, roads that provide opportunity for traffic calming and other kinds of ways to make neighborhoods safer. It's all about safety, primarily about safety, I should say, whether it be the maintenance of our sidewalks or other infrastructure. This is something that we are further discussing. It's a major concern. Well, how are other governmental entities buying into this concept? Is this just a policy that is going to sit here? Are we going to be actually able to implement it? Well, it seems like it may be more the latter. As the State Highway Department and CROG, who are responsible for distributing a lot of money to this town for road work and so forth, are buying into it also. So it behooves us to get our policy down and so that it can be made public to those other agencies, made public to anybody who's going to develop along our streets, so that each implementor can help with the implementation of the overall policy. That's all my report, Madam Mayor. And our next meeting will be the third Tuesday of October.
Golf Committee, Councilor Merritt?
Thank you, Madam.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We canceled the meeting tonight that we were going to have because of our reception. Only two things have happened that's been very important for the golf course. One is our acquisition of the house next to the golf course, which we've been after for years for parking and maybe other uses eventually. And we apparently won a bid at a very low price, $113,000, was it? Yeah, $113,000 for a house is a good price. And thank our town attorney for that wise purchase. It is in process. The other thing is, back on August 12th, we hosted the 2019 Public Links Tournament. And this is a, we don't usually do this, because we have many of these tournaments want to come to Bloomfield. News Wenton Berry Hills, that's a very popular course for that kind of thing. But we usually don't make money on them. And in fact, we lose money. So we really don't, aren't that desperate for the acclaim that we get from these things. But in this case, it was a special one, and so we took the exception and hosted this tournament. And for our reputation in Connecticut, it was important to do this. And let me see if I can read some of these commas. Anyway, they just sound important. And these are all the golf pros in Connecticut came. And we are recognized as the number one public golf course in Connecticut. And we get acclaim from the golf pros over and over. So this renewed our status as the best golf course around. So we can be very proud of our golf course. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Excellent. So we'll move on to Council New Business, 1920-15, considering take action regarding appointment to the West Hartford Bloomfield Health District. Is there a motion on the floor?
Send it over.
Second.
Any discussions?
All in favor?
Oh.
Who, who, yahoo.
Joe, do you want to read the?
I'm sorry.
Motion?
Move to appoint Town Manager Robert E. Smith to fill this vacancy. That's better. Can we get a little clarity on the vacancy?
So the town manager is a member of the Board of Directors for the West Hartford Bloomfield Health District. Now that we do have a new town manager, it's necessary to appoint that town manager. Bloomfield gets to appoint members to the board. So while we now have a new town manager, it's appropriate for this council to appoint that new town manager to the West Hartford Bloomfield Health District Board, taking over from our previous town manager, Mr. Phil Shank. Any discussions?
Madam Mayor, is there a way you could explain a little bit more of the role that the town manager plays on that?
Okay, I can go back in history if you'd like.
No, not back in history. Just a quick.
So the town manager of both towns, the West Hartford Bloomfield Health District, is a health district that serves both West Hartford and Bloomfield. And the town manager for both towns usually sits on that district, along with other residents, once there's a vacancy that we appoint to the board. Phil was our past chair of the board, and he had certain responsibilities, right? And the board decides who have those responsibilities once you become a board member. So who'd best be able to advocate for us on that board would be our town manager. Any further discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries unanimously. 1920-16, consider and take action regarding appointment zoning board of appeals is alternate. Is there a motion on the floor?
Madam Mayor?
Councilor Mann?
Yes, we need to identify a replacement for Robert Wolf, who passed away. This position on the ZBA as an alternate is required to have 60 days before that position is replaced. Of course, 60 days is not enough to get us to November, which there'll be, there are two, two people on the ballot, the Democrats, to take two positions on the ZBA. So it doesn't make sense to put an interim person. We can point one of the two people that are running at this point. And my recommendation would be to recommend Keith Martin to fill that vacancy. He was first considered for it back several weeks ago. Both of them will eventually. There's another woman, Tashina Mars Daily, who will also likely get on the board. So I think in order to keep the process moving and meet our obligation within the 60 days, I would recommend Keith Martin.
Is there a second? Any discussions?
Madam Mayor?
Councilor Lorenzo?
Yeah, just one quick point of clarification. So it says here that the term is ending 11/11/19. I'm assuming that's for the Mr. Wolf, who's passed away?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
And the replacement will end too, but that's when.
Right. And then there are two people who will be on the ballot.
Any further discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. 1920-17, consider and take action regarding tax refund, Command Aerospace Corporation. Is there a motion on the floor?
Madam Mayor, I will move this item forward. This is a technical issue relating to the timing of filing for their, filing extension for property taxes, getting that extension in slightly late, the statute not allowing, not allowing the tax assessor to remove the penalty, but the legislature of the state of Connecticut filing, I guess, on a regular basis, a special act when the legislature meets that allows these penalties to be revoked. So as a result of all of this, the tax assessor, the attorney, and Command Corporation have agreed that they should refund the amount of $221,000 and $221,002 for this, the whole series of taxes and penalties. So what I would like to move at this point is the town issue Command Aerospace Corporation a property tax refund on the 2017 grant list in the amount of $221,002, as authorized specifically by Connecticut General Assembly Bill 7413, Public Act 19-200.
A little second.
Any further discussions? Councilor Merritt?
Wasn't part of this the fire tax? And should that be approved by the fire departments?
You're right. You are correct. It's the fire deposit. I assume since we are the administrator of that, in the, has the fire tax been, has the fire district been consulted on this?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Yes, they have.
Any further discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. 1920-18, considering take action regarding tax refund. Is there a motion on the floor?
Send it over.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. At this time, we'll have a report from our town manager.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just some quick updates. I've completed three weeks of service here and am gaining an appreciation for the incredible community, as well as our dedicated staff and leadership. I met with the CTCMA last week and had an opportunity to connect with a good range of managers across our area. I'll be directly connecting with West Hartford and Windsor in the near future. I've been meeting directly with the department leadership in one-on-one meetings and gaining a granular understanding of the challenges and opportunities that they're facing. My goal is to be able to assemble a report to council within the next several weeks, summarizing what I'm finding, and use that to springboard with staff into some more specific ideas to focus on some short-term action. I may have missed visitors this week, this past week, as I've been focusing on getting out of the office and meeting with departments and groups at their locations and service delivery points. My schedule has been crowded. Please know I'm making time to visit with individuals by appointment, as well as drop in when I'm at the office. So please drop in when you can. I also met with the town's new librarian. And I have to say, she promises to be an excellent addition to our team. I look forward to working with her and her team to expand the library's impact and services to the community. I also saw the announcement, Wenton Berry Links held the amateur golfers. I also saw the announcement that Wittenbury Links held the amateur golfers from some 41 different public courses across our state. The stories were published in the CSGA website, and we were named number one Golf Week's Best for 2019. We enjoy a 97 percent recommendation from players who post to Golf Advisor. Our course is doing really well. The town conducted a tax sale, and as reported, we did purchase 270 Woodland Avenue. I'm looking forward to digging into that, seeing what we're going to do there. Discussions are ongoing with the MDC over the requirement for a surge tank at the Public Works Building. We've had a little bit of pushback from them, and we haven't made the progress that we'd hoped. It may impact the critical path and timing of the conclusion of our Public Works project. I'd like to say while we're struggling with the fountain at Philly Park, our teams are focusing on expediting the solution. We are making great progress on the Greenway. We look forward to that being fully open for our community's use. I'll be providing updates to council on a regular basis. I've made arrangements with the messenger to put a manager's minute update in the messenger about once a month. And I'll be looking for other ways to engage the public and grow the depth of our services and performance reporting to the public. Thank you.
Mr. Manager, through the mayor, just a question. You said we purchased 270 Woodland Avenue. Are you sure that's what you --
Is that the wrong address?
Yeah.
It's the parcel beside the golf course, and I was trying to figure out which one it was.
Terry Plains.
Terry Plains, huh?
Three weeks, Woodland Avenue, Terry Plains. Kind of sounds the same, right? So thank you very much, Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you.
So tomorrow at 9:45, I believe it is, to noon, there's going to be a senior expo at 330 Park Avenue. If you have time, please make sure that you go over to our senior services building, human services building. On October 2nd, the -- where did I put it, October 2nd? October 3rd, there's going to be the Minority Construction Council will be having an event at the Human Services Building for minority contractors. On October 3rd as well, there will be a diabetes self-management program that will start at the new Human Services Building. I believe it's from 9 to 12, and I hope I'm correct, because I am teaching the class. Also, on October 3rd, I believe it's at 6 o'clock, Access Health will be at the Human Services Building having a healthy chat conversation, because open enrollment for Access Health starts on November 1st to, I believe, December 15th. So that's October 2nd. There will be a business seminar also at the Human Services Building for those who are interested in starting or who have a small business. There'll be financial workshops starting on October 2nd. And I think I have all of those. I believe that they're on the website. If not, we'll definitely make sure that that information gets passed to the town manager's office and gets put on our website. At this time, can we have approval of the minutes for September 9?
Send it over.
Any discussions? So are we going to amend the motion to accept with corrections?
So, send it over.
Any further discussions? Kevin is smiling. He's happy. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion on the floor? Oh, I'm sorry. What was it? I'm sorry. I got a little excited. I was looking at the time like, oh, my goodness, we did this in an hour? However, I'm going to dial it back a little bit. We're going to have council comments, starting with Councilor Merritt.
Goodness. I have to rave how excited I am about the fact that this week you can now walk the length of our -- two-mile length of our East Coast Greenway section in Bloomfield. This is something that I've wanted for so long, and so many other people do. And it's just great to see. It goes from, actually from Windsor almost to -- it starts in Windsor and it goes to Simsbury almost, but it's almost all in Bloomfield. So it's the first section, and hopefully we'll have it going the length of the town for too many years or less. And we have the next section to happen is going to go to Terryville. So you're going to be able to ride a bicycle from Windsor at the end of the railroad tracks to -- is there a parking lot? You can park there. To all the way across Tungus and Dunkaster Road and past Terryville Road and Old St. Andrews Church, and the way that the railroad tracks used to go and to Terryville. And the section to Terryville, hopefully, will follow this next year. So it was really exciting to see that done, and meant some meaning. And on Facebook, there's an East Coast Greenway, Bloomfield, Connecticut, East Coast Greenway that I've been posting pictures of it and monitoring the progress over the last few years. So hopefully, we'll keep going with that. And the other thing I have to rave about is how happy a number of us are about the pickleball courts that were done by this council. And within one year, Dave Bolesko managed to put them up, and I think he did an amazing job. And it's to see how popular those are all over northern Connecticut. People are driving in from all over to play pickleball in Bloomfield. So we have the best and the only, I think, outside pickleball courts. West Hartford's trailing us. They're going to have some online pretty quick, but they don't yet. And so it's something we can be proud of. Thank you. The only thing we need now is the double size of the library, and that would be just too much to expect.
Thank you. Councilor Goff?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Three quick things. It's hard to believe, but two weeks ago was the night before the Democratic primary here in Bloomfield. And I just want to rave about the citizens of Bloomfield for turnout, because it's just important that everyone exercise their right to vote, regardless of who you vote for. And the turnout for a municipal primary was an amazing 30.4 percent. So I think we should all congratulate the citizens of Bloomfield. Secondly, one other event coming up this Friday is the annual smoker event at the Blue Hills Fire Department. I believe that starts at 4:00 p.m., and I believe everyone is welcome and come out and enjoy with the fire department. Finally, an event that is a little peculiar. The University of Hartford this weekend, on Friday and Saturday, will be hosting a Harold Lloyd Symposium. And I find that an amazing thing, and Harold Lloyd's granddaughter will be here. So there will be a session. If you can look this up on the web, there will be a session on Friday, which will be a symposium talking about Lloyd and his contribution to the silent film industry and the sound film industry. And then on Saturday night, they will be showing Safety Last, which is just a marvelous film. And if you've never seen it, I highly recommend it. They will have live musical accompanying. So with that, I hope you all participate in a lot of these events coming up, because we have a lot of good things happening in Bloomfield. Thank you.
Councilor Lorenzo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, good evening, everybody. I'll be brief tonight. I do want to again extend our congratulations to all of our award winners tonight by the Bloomfield Beautification Committee. Congratulations to everyone. All of those homes and businesses were beautiful and are adding to Bloomfield to make it a better place to live and to work. I wanted to mention to our town manager that while he's checking on the fountains over at Philly Park, if he can also check in with Eversource to find out when they're going to turn on our lights on the town green.
Thank you.
It's been a while, and I think we pay our bills. I don't know. I don't know. The other thing I wanted to mention is I've been getting a lot of questions about our drummer boy. Where is our drummer boy? I know where he is. He's out for a makeover.
He's back.
And he is coming back. But I guess I was wondering, and pardon me for not having checked before tonight, but maybe there is something on the website that's providing an update on the drummer boy and what's been happening with him. But I thought maybe we could put something out there so people are not as so worried that the drummer boy has gone AWOL and isn't returning. So anyway, I wanted to bring that up. And last but not least, I think we talked about 330 Park and the senior expo and Access Health and everything. There's also a beautiful food bank over at 330 Park. It's been expanded. It's much bigger. It's really nice, and it's so well-stocked. And that's because we have a lot of people who need food in our community. So if you happen to be going over there for the senior expo or to Access Health, bring something, bring some nonperishable goods along with you and donate them to the food bank. Because believe it or not, you wouldn't think it, you know, in the community we live in, but when you really start to look around, there are a lot of people in need. It doesn't seem that way at first appearances, but when you go around the neighborhood and look into things, you do see we have some people in need. So please, please remember to donate to the food bank. And with that, I will say I hope everybody enjoyed summer. Today is the first day of autumn. I think Ms. Mann said the temperature was 84, so 88. So I hope those days continue. I'm looking forward to it. All right, that's all I have for tonight, so thank you.
Councilor Ian?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. A couple of things, some good news, many of you may not have seen, but ABB, which is a French company that purchased our combustion engineering in Windsor many years ago, is expanding in Bloomfield, and that's good news. They seem to have a belief that this is a good place to do business, and they're going to be adding however, 170 employees and two other sites, and they're going to be increasing their engineering jobs, 30 jobs in the near future in Bloomfield. That's a good thing. Also, the first operational solar panel array in Connecticut that's a shared clean energy project is behind our own Bloomfield Board of Education building, and it's about to go live. And that's an exciting thing, because this is the first one in the state. We are pioneers, as we said earlier, when we're talking about energy, energy efficiency. Our households, almost 45 percent, or at least the last count was 45 percent of our households in town have participated in Home Energy Solutions Program, which means that they invited someone into their home to tell them how they could save money, how they can tighten up their house, how they can use less electricity, and so forth. So with that, those kinds of recommendations, everybody benefits. So Bloomfield is a leader in that area, and I'm really happy to see that this project is going. It's going to be our first shared solar program. 60 percent of the power will go to the Board of Education. The rest of it will go to people whose homes don't lend themselves to solar, because they're surrounded by trees, whether oriented the runway, and to people of low income. They can buy into this process and reduce their electric costs. One other, a couple of things. The Wittenbury Land Trust will be sponsoring a cleanup of the Farmington River Park on Saturday, September 28th, from 9 to 11. I think that would be -- many of you may not know much about the Farmington River Park. It's a beautiful piece of land. It's the only access the town has to the Farmington River. Follow Tungus Avenue all the way north, and you probably will run into it. One other thing, that's the 28th of September. The 29th, St. Andrews Church will have a meet and greet and a session to learn about the East Coast Greenway. The church is taking an active role in the ministry to help participate in the success of this Greenway. They want to meet people. They want people to feel that there's a community in this town, and they also will be available to provide, they can provide food and other kinds of services once it really gets going. But that's still up in the air, but they are not up in the air. They really want to meet people. They want to know what they can do to make that experience on the Greenway better. And finally, we all mentioned October 2nd earlier, the Energy Efficiency Day, and that ties into the previous remarks about our town. Please take it seriously. The CEEC, our Conservation, Energy, Environment Committee, has been working for years to really focus on energy efficiency. We've done a lot with our public buildings. We've done a lot with households. We've added solarization. So there's a lot to be, you might want to avail yourselves of, a lot of information, a lot of practical application that can save you money and make you part of the game. Thank you very much.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also want to express the same sentiment as Councilman Goff with the turnout during the Democratic primary. Regardless of who you voted for, it's impressive that Bloomfield had over 30 percent turnout. You look at Hartford, Hartford had 19 percent turnout. That's not really good. So it shows that Bloomfield and its citizens are engaged in the political process of what's going on, and I think that's encouraging for any society. I also want to talk about a couple of the open houses that I attended at the middle school, Carmen Arrows and Metacomet. I have kids, children in both schools, and it was great to see parents out, engaged, and the kids are engaged in, you know, the new semester. And it's just encouraging to see that the teachers are trying their best to make sure our children get a good education. So I just want to just say to the public, if you have a specialty in any way, you can volunteer your service within the schools. I think that's important. That's bringing the community together and getting involved and helping out. I also wanted to say thanks to our town manager. I think he's off to a good start. Both the mayor and I met with him a couple days ago, and I think he has a good grasp of what's going on. I think it's going to be good for Bloomfield. And he has an open door system. I don't think his cell phone is available, but he does have an open door system. I think it's great for the town. I just want to continue to encourage our residents to come out and engage in this process, hold us accountable, ask your questions, and it's just going to make Bloomfield even a better place. And when I go around the place, as the mayor stated many times, we're very proud of Bloomfield, and we're continuing to share the lovely and wonderful things that are happening here with various companies. People want to move to Bloomfield. Companies want to come here, and I think that's a great thing. It benefits everyone. I just want to continue our residents to come out. Tonight was a great example. Once again, with the Beautification Committee, I think if the mayor and I collaborate, we can probably try to help each other, see if we can get on that list for next year. I don't know, I don't have a green thumb also, but I think we got to do something to get on that list, even if we can pay our way on. But anyway, thank you very much for continuing to come in out, and have a wonderful evening, and I will see you next time. Thank you.
He really didn't mean pay our way. We know people though, right? We know people on the committee. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So I just wanted, just two things. Please remember that there's a partnership between the First Congregational Church, the First Cathedral, and Rehoboth Church of God with the Backpack Program for our students. So please, if you have nonperishable food items that you would like to donate, you can donate to either one of those churches, the First Congregational Church, the First Cathedral, or the Rehoboth Church of God, who have taken over the Backpack Program. Also, flu season is coming up. I know the West Hartford-Bloomfield Health District will have a few flu clinics in both West Hartford and Bloomfield, but you can also call the Health District to make an appointment to get your flu shot. I know there's a lot going on with vaping, and I know that there was a law passed that we increased the age of being able to buy vaping products. But with so many deaths happening, I'm just asking our community to be more aware of what's going on with our young people, be more aware of what you're putting on, what you're putting in your system. We thought that this vaping thing would be a helpful thing, and in some instances it is. But when you start buying the flavors of the vaping pens or the products, that's what's creating all the issues with your lungs. So a young person can have the lung of an 80-year-old, and it can even cause death. So we're just trying to make sure that our residents, our neighbors, our students, our children are aware of the dangers. I know that they're trying to ban some products. I applaud Walmart, sort of kind of somewhat, because they will stop selling vaping products once they're sold out. They're not going to take anything off the shelves, but once they're sold out, they're not going to order any more of the flavors. So let's just be a little bit more mindful and a little bit more vigilant with what's going on with our young people. I'd like to thank everyone that came out tonight. I think it's important to be engaged, and you being here is absolutely wonderful and encouraging. So thank you for coming. Thank you to all who stayed. I always say that you are the real MVP, but I'm hoping that we're doing a little bit better on time so that, you know, you will come back the next time. With that, is there a motion on the -- all in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you and good night.